Would you please stand? Welcome to the Glasgow City Council meeting for tonight. We'll begin with our pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who remain standing, Councilman Lowry will lead us in our invocation.
We can bow our heads, please. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with not enough words just to thank you for, for all that you do for us and all that you've given us and for your patience, Lord. We send out prayers to our community all across the state, Lord, as people are recovering from the recent floods. We just ask your hedge of protection over those as we go through this time. We are thankful, Lord, for our first responders who dealt with this situation. We ask that you be with us this evening as we go about the business of the city and we just thank you for who you are. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Be seated. I'll ask Clerk Cashin to call the roll.
Benell.
Present.
Burris.
Here.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Trigg.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
All right, 100% attendance. Thank you all for being here. The work of the city is important and I'm glad that everybody's here to be a part of it. First thing we need to do is to approve the agenda by which we're going to operate this meeting. You got in your packet back on Thursday, a proposed agenda for tonight's business. I will entertain a motion that we approve that agenda and continue following it.
Motion, Benell.
Is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on tonight's agenda? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We will move forward with the agenda as it was proposed. First thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the meeting we had back on Monday, March the 24th. You've had those in your possession now and I would ask that you entertain a mo- or I entertain a motion that you would like to enter these into the record of the meeting on March 24th.
Motion.
Councilman? Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay. Any discussion on the minutes from March 24th? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are now in the record books from March the 24th. We'd like to let you know that this is National Telecommunicators Week and we actually have a couple of our dispatchers from our highly touted 911 dispatch department. Allison Burton and Nita Wells are here with us tonight from the 911 center and we appreciate everything that you all do for the entire community and we're glad that you all come to keep up with the council meetings and I hope we have a really good week over there for the telecommunicators. Very, very important part of what happens here in the city. Another important part, we've, this has been so much talk about this, I heard, even heard some tonight, but I felt like that with the recent floods that we had, some that we were not used to such rainfall, but we had a great deal of effort that the Department of Public Works had to put in in order to deal with the flooding that we had back over the last couple of weeks. And Jim McGowan is going to come forward. He has done some research and put together some figures and is going to talk about the city's response to the flooding and what we, I guess Jim, have learned after going through that experience.
It's working.
It is.
I've, I've been researching this last couple of days and I'm, I'm kind of backwards the way I like to explain things. One of the things that I'm, I'm going to start with tonight is I'm, I'm going to start with where all this water goes to, which is Burn, Burn River Lake. As of Wednesday, April, April the 2nd, the Burn, Burn River Lake was, was approximately 14 and a half feet above what they call normal summer pool, which is, summer pool's five, 52 mean sea level elevation. And so Wednesday before any, Wednesday, April the 2nd, before any rain started on the 3rd, there was, we were already at a flood stage of 14.51 feet. Moving on down the list right here, I've, I've got a whole list of various days, but basically as of today, Monday, April the 14th, our, um, lake level was 585.94 feet, okay? That's a difference of 19.4 feet from a week ago Wednesday. That's how much the lake has actually come up. According to the Army Corps of Engineers website, this, this past April, April the 7th, which that, that was the Monday following the event, we, we had already broke the all-time record of 5, 580 point, uh, let's see here, I've got it on here somewhere, five, 580, 80 feet above sea level. So at that, at that time, they were estimating that it, that the maximum height will be somewhere between 586 and 587. Right now, we're, we're right at the 586 mark, which is highest that's ever been recorded down here, according to the website. But breaking that down, Thursday, the 2nd, we, we received 3.59 inches of rain and we, we were just fortunate that it, that was scattered over about a 12-hour period. Same way on Friday, the 4th, we, we got 2.99 inches. Saturday the 5th, again, we got two, 2.57 inches. The total rainfall for those three days was, was 9.15 inches, basically in a 72-hour period. We were very fortunate that that, that didn't come all, all within one day or, or even a day and a half. But what, what was going on, this, this, this rain would, would start and we'd start getting calls about some minor flooding issues going on over on South Green. IGA over here on Happy Valley Road was starting to flood and all of a sudden it just slowed down and quit. Waters would recede. Within an hour and a half, two hours, we'd get the same calls back again that water, water was starting to rise in these areas. Basically, the runoff intensity exceeded the capacity of many of our city streets brief, briefly for, for periods of like 30 minutes to two hours at a time. Then, like I said, it would, it would slow down. The storm system would catch up. I think it's time, we got it made. All of a sudden, then here, here, here these, these heavy rains would come again. The, like I said, the rainfall spread out over a longer duration. That, that, that actually kept the city, city from seeing major flooding issues. Every day, crews were sent out to check storm drainage infrastructure throughout the city and wherever possible and safety entering areas, storm drains were cleaned out of debris and allowed to flow properly. Some, some areas, we couldn't, we couldn't get to them. The water, water was too high over, over some areas that we just have to put pylons around them or signs and let, let people know that there was high water in that area. Other than that, that's pretty much all I had. We were, uh, we were very lucky, according to everybody, everybody in the surrounding communities, out in the counties and stuff. A lot of, a lot of roads closed for several days. I was just talking to Eddie Furlong, our Parks, Parks and Rec guy here. He, he was talking about Beaver Trail was closed till Mon- uh, Monday, which was the 7th, oh, a week ago Monday. Water started to recede and actually got back in, into the banks in that area. Gordon Park was the same way, you know, by Monday, the waters had receded to where, uh, normal, normal levels.
I, I know that you all did a lot of preliminary work using like this new jetter piece of equipment that we have where y'all were trying to find the problem areas and get them cleaned out before they became problem areas.
Like, like several rain, rainfall events we've, we've had, we've, we've actually sent out crews to look at these areas and there's, there's always some, some problem areas. Some, some places in town has more leaves than others and some gets clogged up more than others. Some, some has some different grades on them that actually gets ca- clogged up quicker. So what we do is send, send our crews out to check these areas and get them cleaned off. At the best you can do after, after a short period of rain, sometimes they'll be, they'll be clogged up again. That's where we like, like for the community to, to actually communicate with us, let us know where these problem areas are at. And that being said, we did, we did have several people calling in, letting us know where, where those areas were at.
I thought it was fascinating to see where some of the prevention, uh, operations that had been done ahead of time over the years were actually seeing water coming through some of these retaining ponds and things that were set up, but they don't get used that much, but they were really working.
They were, they were getting used, like I said.
Yeah.
That weekend in, in particular, yes, they were.
Yeah.
I'm saying it correctly.
Anybody got any questions for Jim? He lives in that world down there and as far as any problems that maybe you all have constituents that have asked you about. We, we try, I say we, Jim and Wes and all the people down at the DPW try to answer the complaints, if you will. If there's a problem with water, they try to go look at it. So maybe this is something new that we don't always see. So if you all have information, some problems that sometimes it's for the first time ever that some of these things show up and it would be good for you all to share that with the Department of Public Works.
Jim, I'd just like to, to say we appreciate the work that everyone in your department did. My question tonight would be, as you've done some mitigation on this, I mean, this is an ongoing.
One of the, one of the areas, the, the key areas that, that I was looking at was the McTavish, uh, McTab, or McTavish Road, I, I forget the name of it, but there is a, a central basin there that actually catches a lot of water from developments up, upstream from there, goes through Tristan, Central Avenue and all the way back up toward the hospital. That is, that is one area that I've seen that, that needs some repairs done on. And when I, when I say repairs, there's, there's some of the outfall slopes on, needs to be smoothed down and added a little bit of dirt to them. By no means has, has it washed out or anything, but there is a, an emergency spillway on it that's, that's almost full now. It's, instead of getting six to not 10 inches of flow coming out the side of it, it's filled up where there's like three or four inches comes out. And what these spillways are designed for is to actually take, take that amount of flow that's in excess of what it's designed for. So there, there was a few areas on that basin itself that was actually flowing more than it should have. So we can go and add some extra, extra soil on top of it and actually build the rim up to, or to take care of that issue.
It's work that can be done by Public Works. That work that can be done by the Public Works.
Yes, it is. Yes.
All right, other questions? Other observations?
Benell, uh, South Green continues to seem, you know, to be an issue there at Bunch and then for the first time in a while down by the Houchens area. What caused all that? Yes, we know we had nine inches of rain, but.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of issues that's going on there, Joe. There's, there's a, first of all, the storm, storm drainage system wasn't, wasn't designed to handle that much rain years ago. And the only thing we can do is, at, at this point without going in and reinventing the whole, whole drainage system there, we actually have to block these roads off on that half. I've been here going on 20 years and I don't know if I've ever seen South Green flood like it. And I know there's, there's a, there's a new, new development there, the Scooters area. There is a drainage inlet right there that, that stopped up and we, once we got that cleared out, that, that started clearing up in that area too. So that's, that's another one of those areas that we, we actually need to be looking at.
All right.
That, you know, going to the Scooters area, that is the new, again, been up on that area for a long time. And that is terrible, you know, most I've seen water, but you know, and we know the Scooters is different, but also what you have different is a lot more parking lot and a new, another school. I don't know if that had any effect on it up there at South Green.
There's some more impervious area there, but one, one of the things was we, we just, there was a couple events that the rainfall intensity exceeded what, what that was designed for. That's, that's a state highway there with the, with the state drains going across. Of course, we, we maintain the drainage on that, but sometimes, sometimes these, these outlets gets covered up and once they, once they get covered up with four foot of water, there's, there's no safe way going in there to clean those, uh, outlets back out. Now, they may have been cleaned the day before. The first rainfall, then or two washes pop bottles, uh, banners and flags like that off of the parking lot and then all of a sudden there it's stopped up again. And some, some of that is, is just issues with the normal trash that's in these areas. So.
You mentioned the, the Bunch and the intersection there on South Green too, which again, that was, I think I mentioned that at the infrastructure meeting before and, and.
We've had, I think, I think the Lister, uh, pretty good size of rainfall event we had, we actually had a, we, we were dispatched to actually go put a, uh, area up or to show people that, hey, hey, this is, this is overflowing here, you know? So.
When they repaved, and I know South Green is one of the streets that they said they were going to repave, and they just go up higher. It seems things just, and I was just looking at the, where the drain is and somebody else said here, they don't, y'all probably already talked about this years ago. It's kind of on the uphill. The drain itself, water has to go uphill to get to it a little bit there. But there's also, you know, it's kind of like the big straw versus the small straw. The pavement has gotten higher and higher. So the area for the water to go in, you've kind of, it's been, not you guys, but it looks like it's been narrowed by the.
Yeah.
So I'm, I don't know if that would have anything to do with the pavement when they repaved that. If, you know, if it gets any higher, that's going to shorten, you know, the space that the water can go in is going to shrink.
One of the things, the, the higher, higher that pavement comes, the less curb you got showing and the less curb you got showing, the more chance for the water actually to get off into, into, into the side yards. But these, these outlets that are upstream, a lot, a lot of them are getting stopped up and citizens don't understand it, you know, every, every time a plastic bottle blows out the back of a truck or somebody pitches one down the road, I mean, there's, there, even myself, a lot of times I don't, I don't mean to get rid of it. I don't mean the litter, but it was to fly out the back of my truck and all of a sudden somebody runs over. You've got a flat area, half size that, uh, piece of paper right there that actually stops these drains up. You had five or six of them up there and next thing you know, we've got a, we've got a road standing four or six inches of water, especially in these, in these larger rainfall events we've been having.
I just didn't know if, when they do the paving, if that might be brought up to the, to the end to say, hey, don't narrow the gap anymore because.
Yeah, we definitely don't need to be, be narrowing the gap on them. That's, that's for sure.
Of course, if you're just paving over the top of it, it's going to narrow the,
Yeah.
drain.
I'm sure before they start, you will have a lot of conversations with the State Highway Department to make sure that these little things that they don't know about, they'll benefit from your knowledge.
That's right. Yes.
All right, good discussion. Anything else? Thank you for.
Gee, I have a question. Do you know, is there going to be any improvements for the Brawa area, just for the safety of the animals?
I do not know that. Uh, I know, I know that's, uh, they had, they had went in there and put the berm, berm around it with the sump pumps and it is, as far as I know, they, the only reason that they had evacuated the animals before was to take, take precaution just in case, you know? So within, by, by the time the waters receded, they, they took them all back in there.
The improvement that they had made on Trojan Trail in recent years, did that help with any of the flooding this year? Did it?
It did.
All right. Well, thank you, Jim, for your hard work and putting this together and all of the people that work in your department down there. It's a, you have to come to work and not really know where you're going to be dispatched because you can't tell what the flooding is going to.
I don't know. You know, people, people doesn't realize that we can't be everywhere all the time. We, we rely on the community to let us know of, of some problem areas. There, you know, granted, there is a, there's a list that we have of, of places that we normally go, go check, but, uh, you know, there were some places that were flooded that, that never, never knew that they, that they could get flooded.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, we, we do the best we can.
Thank you. Eddie, anything you want to say about Beaver Trail? Are you about, got it figured out?
Yep. All right, real quick.
All right.
So the park was closed longer last week than just Monday. I do want to say that when we have the park closed, the reason it's closed is for the public safety. So if, when, if you go out there and the gates are closed, it's closed for a reason. There were some issues out there with electrical, which is why it was closed longer. We had some people that were going around the fence and getting into the park and, and walking when it, when the water went down, but we had some electrical issues and that was why we kept it closed longer. So EPB can come out and fix that. As far as the progress of the rebuild, if you will, we had to put all new mulch in the playground, which that started this morning. We should be done either tomorrow or the next day and then the playground will open back up. We actually had it quarantined off with caution tape, but people got out there and tore all that down and started using the playground equipment. It was closed for a reason. We didn't have enough surfacing down there. So when we close the park, it's closed for a reason. So please stay out. It's for your own safety. But everything is going good. We, we had some damage, but it wasn't that much. Most of it is just cleanup for us. So.
Thank you very much. You've got a good crew too that works with you to clean up stuff. So, all right, let's continue with our agenda and move into the old business. Rich?
The next three items are zoning ordinances. The first one is an ordinance rezoning the property located at 603 West Main Street. This is a request for a change from the I-1 to a B-2 classification. Owner applicant CB Holdings LLC has requested a zoning change for the property located at 603 West Main Street. The property contains .29 acres more or less in the city. The request is for a zoning change from I-1 to a B-2 classification. A schematic drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit A. A trial type due process hearing concerning this proposed zoning change was held on February 18th by the Planning Commission, resulting in a unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from I-1 to B-2. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council and are hereby adopted and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City/County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located at 603 West Main Street is rezoned from I-1 to a B-2 classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of the property shall comply with the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
This is the second reading of this ordinance before you and I will entertain a motion that we approve the second reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Benell.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Councilman Neal. This is a roll call vote. Danielle?
Burris.
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Benell?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Next item is another zoning change ordinance. This is for the property located at 1573 Cleveland Avenue. It contains 160 acres more or less and the request is for a change from I-1 to a PUD, which is a Planned Unit Development District Classification. The owner and applicant, City of Glasgow, has requested a zoning change for the property at 1573 Cleveland Avenue, which contains 160 acres. The request is from I-1 to a PUD classification. A drawing of the subject property is attached as Exhibit A. A trial type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on February 18th by the City/County Planning and Zoning Commission. It resulted in the unanimous recommendation that the property be rezoned from I-1 to the PUD classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council and are adopted by the council and attached as Exhibit B. Now therefore hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Section 1, findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property at 1573 Cleveland Avenue is changed from I-1 to a PUD classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, this is second reading of this ordinance. You've had a chance to go over it. I would entertain a motion that we approve second reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, is there a second?
I think Kirkpatrick.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? We have a roll call, a vote on second reading.
I have one, man. Uh, and I talked to Kevin already about it. Last week when they made the, or two weeks ago when we made the original announcement, there was some questions about the PUD designation and he was, I talked to him and he explained it to me and I explained it back to the folks who'd asked the question, but I didn't know if he wanted to do it as a.
All right, Kevin. This is Kevin Mott, Director of Planning and Zoning.
The, the PUD classification, the Planned Unit Development Classification was added to the Glasgow zoning ordinance, 2018, 2019, somewhere around in there. Maybe even 2017. I don't have it right in front of me. I can't quite recall it, but that classification's been on the books for six to seven years now. It's just, nobody has actually brought it forward yet. But it was not a new classification just created out of anything. So, yeah. it forward yet, but it was not a new classification, just created out of anything, so, yeah, lots of public input and, and public meetings with regards to add that, that text to the, to the zoning ordinance.
All right. Any questions for Kevin while he's got the floor? All right, so I'll call the question with the roll call.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Burris.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Benel.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Unanimous approval of that, the second reading of that ordinance, and we've got another second reading, Rich.
Glasgow zoning ordinance relates to the property located at approximately 635 feet north of the North Jackson Highway and Hutcheson Road intersection, containing 12.8 acres, more or less. The request is for a change from the R-1 Low Density Residential District to a B-2 General Business District, and B-2 General Business District to a Agricultural District Classification. Owner applicant Sam Dickinson has requested a zoning change for the property located approximately 635 feet north of the North Jackson Highway and Hutcheson Road intersection in Glasgow, containing 12.8 acres, more or less. The request is for a change from R-1 and B-2 Classification to an Ag District Classification. A schematic drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit A. A trial type due process hearing concerning this proposed zoning change was held on February 18th by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it resulted in a unanimous recommendation by the Commission that the property be rezoned from R-1 and B-2 to an Agricultural District Classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the Commission have been forwarded to the Council and are hereby adopted by the Council and attached as Exhibit B. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the Commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located approximately 635 feet north of the North Jackson Highway and Hutcheson Road intersection, containing 12.8 acres, more or less, will be rezoned from R-1 and B-2 Classification to an Agricultural District Classification, the real property covered by this ordinance being described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of the property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the second reading of this ordinance, we'll move forward and entertain a motion to approve on second reading.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Is there a discussion on this particular reading of the ordinance? There being none, we'll ask for a roll call vote on second reading, Danielle.
Shoemaker.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Benel.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Burris.
Yes.
Okay, the second reading of the ordinance passes unanimously. Let's move to new business, Rich.
Next item is a resolution for the City to make application for a composting grant administered through the Kentucky Pride Fund, be it hereby resolved by the City that April Russell, grant writer for the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the City for a grant in the amount of $97,532 to be administered through the Kentucky Pride Fund for a composting grant, which will be used, if received, for the purpose of purchasing additional concrete and for the construction of a wall extension for the compost pad. This grant has a 75-25 match, with the income match being $24,385. Be it hereby resolved, further that the City is authorizing Mayor Royce to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for this grant.
All right, we've heard the resolution regarding the grant for, this is a composting grant, I will entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second. Lowry.
From Councilman Lowry, okay. Is there any discussion about this resolution? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and the resolution is passed. Inside of your packet that you received back on Thursday, there are several appointments to some of the committees that you were provided this list for, I encourage you to read over those, we will be at the next council meeting, bringing it up for a vote, for them to take the positions of those particular committees that they have, are going to be appointed to, so I want you to make sure and be aware of that. Okay, let's see, we have some announcements coming up Saturday, it's the big Easter Extravaganza. I was putting pressure on Beaver Creek, Beaver Trail Park to get that park ready to roll for the Easter egg hunt, and so that's going to be on Saturday, the 19th, 1 o'clock for less than three years old, 1:15 for four to seven, 1:30 is going to be for the eight to 10-year-olds, and I understand there's going to be 12,000-plus eggs and prizes for all ages, so it's a, it's a big deal, they do a nice job with it, I would encourage you to take the youngsters out there for the Easter Extravaganza here of 2025. April, do you want to, at one point, we were talking about making an announcement about Entertain Glasgow. Well, if you can, it's, it's, this is big news right here, it really is.
About, have the dates, if that, if that would be.
Okay, April is the chairperson of Entertain Glasgow.
Sure, so, we'll start, it's always the 4th Friday of May, June, July, and August. We will start in May with Big Black Cadillac, they're kind of a funk and soul band, they'll be here on the square, that's going to be a lot of fun. June, I haven't completely nailed down yet, it'll be the Christian concert out at Beaver Trail. July is going to be, Tyrone Dunn is coming back, so he'll be up here on the square, and that's always fun. We also have the Van Winkle and the Spirits, I believe, are going to be here, they're from Bowling Green, also, so they'll open for him, and, and then in August, we're going to have Colin Ray, so that, that's a big one for us, we're going to end it with a Big Bang, he's a 90's country artist, I think all of us know who he is.
Colin Ray.
Some of the younger people on Entertain Glasgow might not have known who they, he was, but we, they listen to some of his songs, and they're super excited to. They'll be out at the park, we'll have the food trucks, it'll be a big time, and then on September the 13th, we will have, the balloons are returning, we have talked, we contracted with somebody, he guarantees 10 balloons, so that'll be a big deal out at the airport on September the 13th. Anybody have any questions?
All right, it's exciting times, coming into our season right here. Thank you very much, if there are no questions, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn until our next meeting, which is going to be on the 28th of April, here at 6:00 PM, so is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yes, yeah, wait a second, okay. Let's, you have a second, and then you can ask a question.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, Elizabeth.
Well, I had a concerned citizen to approach me, there was a couple of them, and they started off by talking about how all the good changes Glasgow had made as far as the neatness and the beauty in Glasgow, and the old Captain D's that was torn down, they were talking about that, how much better it looked, but then they said, but you look across the street at the Dollar Store, and there's all these auction signs going up, and the same thing at, across from Walgreens, they were talking about that being such an eyesore for Glasgow, because sometimes when you come up through those streets, that is the first thing you see. So I guess I just have a tendency to sort of agree with that, and I got to thinking about like Jacobs Estate Sales, I go to those a lot, he has social media, he has a YouTube, and that's his way of advertising. He has one sign that goes up at the end of the street or the neighborhood, and I, I just, you know, I told him I would bring this up, I don't know if anybody feel, anybody else feels the same way with that being such an eyesore.
Well, let me tell you the latest.
Okay.
The, we have a lot of complaints about that, we do not have an ordinance that prohibits that. The problem is, is that the property where the signs are, for example, at the end of South Green Street, it's a state right-of-way, and I have talked to the state saying, you know, this is y'all's property, we've got people putting signs over here, and it really can kind of get cluttered, what can you all advise as far as what we should do? The response I got from the state was that it's such a short term, that there's really nothing they can do about it, because it's a short, in other words, it's only up there for a week, even though, yes, it does get cluttered every week with a different sort of a, of an auction sign, but that was their response. Then, from the standpoint of the, what we're talking about, from the, well, what am I trying to say?
Walgreens are.
Well, I'm not talking about Walgreens, but I'm just trying to tell you, the other problem with it is, is that there's Cheryl Pena, who is our Code Enforcement Officer, you can't have a sign up for a very long period of time, so what Cheryl does is that she makes a note of when these auctions are, and she makes sure they take them down two days after the end of the auction. So what you have is, you have different, different auctions, end dates, all that sort of stuff, the way to fix it is for this body to pass an ordinance that says, no signs to be allowed in any sort of right-of-way, or anything like that. That has, I think, Rich, been tried before, and maybe failed before, do you recall?
Will that be override, can you override that on a state highway, though?
Well, we can, yes, we can, because the state's, the state's response is, they're not going to do anything about it, well, because it's such a short period of time, but I remember some conversation about that, there was some effort to have a city ordinance that there can't be things like that.
My recollection is, there is an ordinance on it, I can't cite to you the, the details of it, but there's a timeframe that they can be up, and then it gives the authority for the Code Enforcement Officer to take those signs down, but I, I'd be happy to take a look at that and, and report back to you on that, but I think that several years ago, there was an ordinance.
But even with the timeframe, especially across from Walgreens, it's just, I can't believe there's that much property in Glasgow going up for sale. I mean, it's just tons, it just, even though they're taking them down, there's more that's coming that's replacing them.
Joe, you wanted to say something?
I was going to ask Freddie if he would do it, it was pretty contentious, the last time we had these sign, discussion and everything else, and what came out of that was, the only ones that would be allowed to put the signs up, I believe, was the seller property, because before, there was signs for everything, and so the city says, all right, we want all the signs to go away, and in the end, the compromise, I think, what that was made was, was that the folks that were selling property, they rallied enough to where they could keep their signs up, and all the other signs, sales and those kind of signs couldn't be put up. And then, the political science become the same issue, so you know, so the whole goal was, was originally no signs, but in the end, property sales was still allowed, for some reason.
But I, do you think that with social media, and the way you can design a YouTube channel, and, it's just like the yard sales, if I want to know where the yard sales are, I get on the Glasgow website and, and look at the permits that were, because you know, at one time, there were yard sale signs going up everywhere.
We, we do a lot of yard sale permits down in, see y'all, yeah. Want Kevin to speak on it? Can you speak on this, Kevin?
I do per, only think it is an eyesore, makes our community look bad when we're trying to make it look so much better.
Right, we do have a section in the Glasgow zoning ordinance, but also in your Code ordinances, it's under handbills, that directly relates to signage, that is, the Realtor signs and signs for, for sale are the only ones that were exempt from being able to set on the right-of-way, every other sign was, was taken out, and that was the only way that, at that time, the Council could agree on having a signed ordinance. They do have a specific timeline that Cheryl follows, I think it's 48 hours, that they have to remove them, but there was no stipulation put on how many could be on a corner, or anything like that, but we, we do have sign regulations with regards to size of signs, how they're lit, things like that, but their only sign that's allowed in the right-of-way is those signs that have property for sale, and, mind you, not all that property that you're looking at, maybe 10% of it's actually for sale in Glasgow, the majority of that's for sale in the county, or even adjacent counties, just pointing you in directions to get you there, so, you know.
Yes, if, you know, if it's, that's what I thought, maybe it was the county, if it's the county, can they not put their signs up in the county?
Well, we don't have an ordinance that, that makes that happen, you, you got to have an ordinance to make that happen, and, and you know, that's either amending your, your ordinance that's on file right now in your handbill, uh, section of your, your Code of Ordnances, that, you know, that may be the requirement that's got to go there, you just, you know, you understand that, that affects a certain clientele and a certain entity as well, so you just got to be, you know, prepared to be able to have those discussions if you're going to do that, so, but yeah, it is wrote in there, it's in the handbill section of your Code of Ordnances.
Help me to explain this, right now, those signs are put up in the right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
What about if somebody out there across from South Green takes that sign and walks it up into their own private property, and puts the sign in their private property?
So, we, we, we have an ordinance that's on file that says you can't advertise for any other property other than what's on your property right now, it was, it's a billboard type ordinance, essentially, so if you're advertising, you have to advertise what is on your property currently, you cannot advertise for anyone else. That ordinance, though, is a little vague when it comes to, technically, right now, yes, they could put a Realtor sign on that property, because it's exempt, the way that the, the City Council wrote it at that time, it's exempt from that rule, though, so that would need to be updated, but in, in theory, yes, they could do that right now.
But I was, it's kind of a gray area, as we have several gray areas, okay?
But I do see it getting out of control, you know, with it being added on Happy Valley Road now, and there on 31, off of South Green.
And, you know, it looks clutter, it looks like clutter, but the problem is, with the rules are written now, it would just, you would just be changing the clutter, because the date would change, there's only X number of days that a sign can be there, so all of those signs would come down, and a whole nother group of signs would go back up in the same area, so that's the, that's the tough part of, of regulating this, for sure.
The, the only other thing that you need to keep in mind, too, is, can't regulate the content of a sign, and I know Rich is, is up to date on this with regards to the Supreme Court ruling, so you can't regulate any content of any sign, you can regulate the size, where it may be located, but you can't actually regulate the content of that sign, too, so if you say only Realtor signs can do this, that, that's not allowed by the, the content, the Supreme Court ruling that was, was done a few years ago, so you got to be careful in that.
It is stickier than it seems.
Yes, sir.
For sure, okay?
And then the other concern, well, the other question they asked me, wouldn't the concern, is the two buildings that the city owns that was torn down on Main Street, off of the square, they were wanting to know what the plan was for that.
We don't have any particular plans, because we're still in the process, the whole reason why we acquired that was so we can build a new retaining wall to keep our parking lot from collapsing, so we're just now into the process of getting quotes on getting that retaining wall built, we can't put anything there until the wall is built, which, that's the reason why we had to have it, because we can't, there wasn't enough room to go back in there and fix that, so what we have to do is, we have to get that wall built, and then there's be lots of other things that, that are going to happen. I, I can say that we, all the drawings that we've done on that over there do include a stairway that will, people will be able to come down from our parking lot up there, down to West Main Street, using those stairs, but not until we get the wall replaced there, because that, that parking lot up there is old, it's kind of crumbling underneath, and so we have to fix that, which is the purpose why we needed it in the first place.
And the other concern, they just. And the other concern, they just unloaded on me, was the two-hour parking in that area. Uh, they feel like a lot of employees are parking in the two-hour parking. And that does not give their customers places to park.
Uh, gosh. Uh, the only thing I can say about that is that we have, uh, you know, we have the two-hour parking, uh, but it's kind of where the business owners, it might help for them to help regulate that some because we don't have, we can't go around and write tickets every hour on the hour, so to speak. What were you going to say, April?
We can no longer mark the tires.
Yeah.
That's what people remember us doing. Um, I don't know, Supreme Court decision? Yeah, there's a Supreme Court decision, took that away from us. So there's no way unless somebody sits there and watches somebody. Honestly, the business owners, there's a downtown business association. They need to go to those meetings and talk to each other. Everybody, um, amongst themselves, you know, talk about things like that. Having your employees parking, all the free parking that the city offers. Um, different items could be addressed there. Again, we can't mark the tires anymore, so unless you're parked in a handicap spot and you're not supposed to be, it's really not that obvious.
Okay, I'll let them know. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. And now I will call the question. All in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? One more thing that I forgot to tell you is that at 7 o'clock, we're doing the two lights ceremony over here at the courthouse. You know, we're coming up on the 250th anniversary of the midnight ride of Paul Revere. And, uh, the Barron County Historical Society, uh, has, uh, put together a little program that we're going to do, myself and Judge Byrd are going to be over there. And we're going to light two lights, just like in the Henry Wadsworth Longfellow poem of "One if by land and two if by sea." We're going to have two lights that are going to shine all week up here in the top floor of Commonwealth Broadcasting, uh, because the actual 250th anniversary was on, it will be on April the 18th. So this is, uh, an event to commemorate that. And there, the, the same group of historical society folks are doing a, um, food drive this week too. So be, be thinking about that. All right, so we're adjourned. I'm sounding the gavel. Thank you.